Good evening. Sorry we're a little bit late. We had a closed session and ran a little bit over. So, good evening. This is our city council meeting. It is Tuesday, November 15th, 2016, and we are readjourning from closed session. Uh, let's see. Any report? Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, thank you Mayor. The city council met in closed session to discuss the two items listed on the closed session agenda. One item of labor negotiations with IBW and one item of anticipated litigation. Presentation was made by staff on both items and direction was given by council, but no reportable action was taken.
Okay, thank you. Okay, if you'll please rise, remove your hats for invocation by Chaplain Dale Willis.
Put bow or heads, please. Father, we come before you and we just thank you for these men and women that are willing to step forward and take care of and work with the business of our city. Lord, we ask you to bless them with wisdom and discernment, bless them with courage and strength. And Lord, we ask that you will bless those that put themselves in harm's way on our behalf to keep our cities civilized and, and, and safe, our policemen and our firemen and our first responders. And Lord, we ask that you will bless the soldiers that fight to give us the opportunity to do the things that have the freedoms that we have. And Lord, one other thing we would, we would ask, and that is that you would bless us with maturity to understand and to appreciate the democratic process and to carry out the will of the people. We honor you, Lord, in Jesus' holy name. Amen.
Amen. Please remain standing and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Our Economic Development Director is going to give a presentation, introduce a newly hired Aquatic Center Recreation Supervisor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, audience and viewers. I'd like to introduce our new aquatic supervisor, and that is Ashley Winslow. Ashley was born and raised in Kingsburg, California, where she worked for the last 15 years as the Community Services and Senior Citizens Coordinator. In that position, she managed parks, aquatics, recreation, the senior center, as well as a variety of other duties as assigned, as we all get. And she really has taken her positions very seriously, working hard to educate herself in all areas of recreation with aquatics being her favorite. She also brings with her a couple of nationally recognized certifications as an aquatics facility operator, a certified playground safety inspector from National Parks and Recreation Society, and she is also a lifeguard instructor through the Red Cross. Ashley brings with her a lot of energy, enthusiasm, and her adorable dog Bentley. I think she's going to be a great addition to our team, so please welcome Ashley Winslow.
I'm extremely excited to be here. I am really excited to be at the Lompoc Aquatic Center. I already feel like it's home away from home, really, because I feel like I'm there more than I really am, but I am enjoying every minute of it and I'm looking forward to all the great things they can bring to the center and to the community. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Joe, you want to do yours first? We're going to have Joe Kavanaugh talk about quarterly safety awards.
Yes. It's my pleasure to announce the first quarter 2016-2017 Central Safety Committee Above and Beyond Awards. The first one is a $100 gift certificate, and it goes to Scott Long from Solid Waste and Collections. Scott, for the second time, found a wallet full of money while working. He runs the street sweeper. He stopped Police Officer Garza and gave him the wallet. The wallet was returned to the owner and the money that was needed to pay rent, over $1,400, was returned. He was nominated by Peter Almato, who is the lead for collections. Second $100 certificate goes to the Streets Division. Throughout the year, the Streets Division provides assistance to other departments and divisions and public safety as a part of their routine job duties. In addition, they have provided assistance with vehicle accidents, in particular one that struck a hydrant on January 19th, 2016, the removal of parts of a vehicle after an automobile accident on February 20th, removal of fallen trees as a support for our urban forestry division, and numerous other support for barricades during police activities and traffic control. And this award was from their supervisor, Lorenzo Gonzalez, the third, as a way of recognizing all the above and beyond and after-hours things that they do. A $50 gift card was also awarded to Sierra Gash from the library. Sierra calmly and swiftly grabbed a fire extinguisher and extinguished a trash can fire that was lit in Grossman Center. Yeah, could have been very disastrous, all those books. And she was nominated by Sarah Bankston, one of the leaders there, Library Two, I believe, is the classification. A $25 gift card was awarded to Dennis Chastain from Parks. Dennis brought to my attention that to change the flags out on H Street, sometimes he's required to climb up the top of his truck because the leads and the pegs to unlock to be able to lower and raise the flags were put at very high to detract from vandalism. So, his recommendation was put into effect that we get locking leads, leads locked up lower on the pole so that he doesn't have to climb up his vehicle to change flags. He was nominated by me. Terry Demora from Community Development also will receive a $25 gift certificate. Terry noticed and requested a review of the sidewalks on the East Cypress area near City Hall. She noticed that there were quite a few upheavals and trip hazards, and with her recommendation, I brought it to Streets' attention, and their Above and Beyond, they came out and ground immediately to protect not only our employees coming in through the Cypress Centres, but also to protect all of our many, many public that walks along that sidewalk. And again, nominated by me. Johnny Gonzalez from Information Systems also brought to my attention the liquid amber trees, and they drop those beautiful seed pods unless you trip on one. And he brought it to my attention, and Parks was already on the job getting it cleaned up and have made it a part of their routine maintenance that whenever those trees go into pod dropping, they will get it cleaned up. Again, nominated by me. Alice Riggs will receive a $25 gift certificate. She works in building and facilities as one of our janitors here in City Hall, and she was nominated for her Above and Beyond duties because when she notices that someone is out ill, she'll go and sanitize and clean their desk area to reduce the potential for germs and contamination of other workers. She was nominated by Marcella Saquila. And last but not least, Brian Sullivan from Stores, he works in our corporate yard area along with purchasing, noticed that there wasn't a school crossing guard on Laurel Street when we started school again, and he made a request to Captain Larder at Police, and a crossing guard was installed at Laurel to protect the students that were crossing the crosswalk. He was nominated by Teresa Hernandez. So, I want to just bring this to your attention, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. So, this is, this is a sad day for the city of Lompoc. Joanne Plummer, good for her, very sad for us. Joanne Plummer is leaving us after, what, 19 years? 19 years. Joanne became the Recreation Manager in 2005, was it?
Yeah.
2005. She's been with us. She came to us, I mean, highly recommended, she's been with us. She is, I think you, I could say you were instrumental in opening the Aquatic Center, this lady right here. So, Joanne has done so many things for our Recreation Division. I don't, I don't think we've replaced you yet, because I don't think we can replace you, so. But anyway, no, we're going to really miss you, Joanne. The entire city is going to miss you, but we want to wish you the best of luck. And as a small token of our gratitude, very small token for what you have done for us, we'd like to present you with this plaque of our appreciation, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor Lingel. I'm going to be short and sweet, because if I'm not, I'll probably start crying. I'd like to thank the city council and city administration for this opportunity to serve the citizens of Lompoc. It has been an amazing ride. I've enjoyed almost every minute of it. I'm sure that Councilmember Starbuck, he and I spoke earlier, he's thrilled, he's not going to have a crazed elf chasing him around at the Christmas parade, so, so that's good. But again, thank you so much for the opportunity to serve the citizens of Lompoc. It has been a pleasure. It has been the ride of my life, and I'm very excited to, for new and exciting adventures that lie before me, but I'm also very excited about the community of Lompoc because you have an amazing staff here, an amazing team that is creative and will, is very, very committed to your citizens, and they're going to continue all the great work that we've worked together to lay a foundation on, and they're just plugging forward and moving on. So, very excited for our community here, and, and thank you again for the opportunity to serve the city for the last 19 years.
Thank you, Joanne. And Joanne, you have to return the plaque because we have an error on it, so we're going to redo it.
That will tell you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Now, Joanne, we're really going to miss you, but good luck to you. City Managers Report.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to highlight that we did do a rededication. We had a rededication of the Vietnam Veterans Memorial at River Park this past Veterans Day on Friday, and I would just wanted to give, extend my appreciation to the local chapter of the Daughters of American Revolution, Dr. Cynthia Allen, who put all, helped put that together, both volunteers from inside their organization, from outside their organization. Want to thank Councilmember Mosby for his, his own contributions, physical work on, on the memorial, and coming out of pocket to help cover some of those expenses, and to our Public Works Director Kevin McKeon and some of the public work staff who pitched in to help out in the effort as well. So, I just encourage people to, if they haven't seen the memorial lately, or they'd seen it in the not-too-distant future and seen that it started falling into a state of disrepair, it's shining and sparkling and restored right now, so, and we plan to keep it that way. But I encourage people to get out there and look at it and, and see, and pay, pay the appropriate respect to those veterans and all the veterans that we have here in our local area. For those who might not be aware of its location, it's euphemistically known as at the end of the road in River Park, so just go down the side road all the way to the back and you'll see the memorial. It's, it's worth the visit and worth the time to pay our respects. Thank you.
Thank you. And as I requested when I was there on Veterans Day, when you're out there, which I hope you do visit, we want to keep it looking nice, so pull a few weeds and sort of dust off the sidewalk a little bit while you're there, so. We don't want to ever go into the disrepair it was before. Okay, we're going to go into public comment on the consent calendar. This is your opportunity to speak to us for up to three minutes on anything on the consent calendar. Seeing no one rise, we're going to close public comment and bring it back to the council. The consent calendar is, or it consists of things that are generally considered routine and will be passed with one motion unless a council member chooses to pull an item. Does any council member wish to pull an item? Seeing no council members wishing pulling, I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I have moved to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Let's vote. And that passes four, zero, with one, I guess, abstention. By the way, Councilmember Starbuck is on an excused absence this evening, so he will return in two weeks.
Oh, killing deer.
Okay, we'll move on to item, oh, we're going to, went to oral communication. This is your opportunity to speak to us for three minutes on anything you choose.
Hello, my name is Don Buck, and I want to ask for public support on public streets, safety on public streets. We have far too many incidences across the city of Lompoc where people are traveling in excessive speeds, well above the posted speed limits. We've got people on the street that I live on that routinely do 50 miles an hour on a 35 mile an hour speed zone. I've got reports from reliable sources, one of which is the mayor, that we have people doing 60 miles an hour on city streets. And these are streets that are very, very unsafe, and we don't live on a highway, we live on city residential streets. You cannot do 50 and 60 miles an hour on H and Ocean, which is part of the Caltrans Highway System. You simply can't do it. But you can do it on my street. And I've got three different offices that says you can, one of which was a, was a Lompoc PD officer, a second one was a deputy sheriff, Santa Barbara County, and third is a city engineer. I find that to be abhorrent. It's totally against any kind of common sense whatsoever. And I have been unsuccessful since April to motivate anybody to put this item before the city council and approve an ordinance, which is in the same document, on the same page, on, in the same paragraph, that says that you, that you have to follow the guidance of the Caltrans Highway Rules and Regulations. That in that same paragraph, it says that you can write, the city council can write an ordinance that says, "We will direct the City Engineering Department to put in stop signs where they're necessary, not where they're proven," all right? Because in order to prove that you can get a stop sign installed at your intersection, you have to have four traffic accidents on that corner in a 12-month period and/or 375 cars per hour, 24/7, traveling down that street. Those are Caltrans, those are highway rules, those are not appropriate for city stop sign installations. So, what I'd like to do is not only ask them to approve that ordinance and issue for direction, but also to make a citywide request for people to come forward and say, "What is the situation on your street?" I've got over 60 some odd pages of documentation between various city members and managers and also city residents that say it's happening all over town. I'd be glad to supply that to the city so that they can consider those installations, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Buck. Anyone else? Seeing no one rise, we're going to close oral communication, and we're going to move on to public hearing. First item is item number seven. It's consideration of the Planning Commission's recommendation for city council approval of development agreement introduction of the first reading. Ms. Breeze?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. As the mayor indicated, we are asking, the Planning Commission is asking the city council to review and consider the material that was presented with the staff report and accept the Planning Commission recommendation to hold a public hearing and to introduce ordinance number 1630, print 16, by first reading of title only, with further reading waived and uncodified ordinance approving a development agreement with Coastal River Terrace and/or to provide alternate direction. The council will remember, on June 21st, we began a discussion of having development agreements that would be attached with the requested vesting tentative map extensions that were anticipated, and this is one of those development agreements. We have gone into the development agreement, and the city attorney made the change, as was requested by council in the last meeting, where instead of saying city operation and maintenance fee payment, we changed the language throughout the development agreement to city operation and maintenance tax payment to be consistent with your direction, and we advised the applicant of the change. Also, we have provided this evening a copy as supplemental information of the calculation details to show how the project share of the operation and maintenance cost was calculated. So, with that information, that completes my staff report, and I'm available for any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Breeze? Okay, we'll open up for public comment then. Anyone wish to speak to us on this item?
Good evening, Mayor Lingel and councilmen. My name is Marco Vujicic, President of Coastal River Terrace, owner of the River Terrace Project. We'd like to thank the city and city staff for their wonderful work in leading us through this, and we look forward to moving forward, and hopefully you guys would approve this so we can continue. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Close public comment, bring it back to the council. Any discussion? Can I entertain a motion then?
I'll give you a motion to approve.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to staff, to approve staff recommendations. Any discussion? Let's vote. That passes four, zero, and one. Congratulations, we look for you to start turning dirt as soon as possible. Congratulations. Okay, move on to item number eight. Item number eight is Tax and Equity Fiscal Responsibility Act, TEFRA, public hearing and issuance of multifamily housing revenue bonds. And this is Ms. Alakarn.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, city council, staff and public. I am Kristi Alakarn, Community Development Program Manager for the city of Lompoc. Tonight, staff recommends the city council hold a TEFRA hearing and public, and receive public testimony for the issuance of multifamily housing revenue bonds for the acquisition and rehabilitation of Woodstone Apartments located at 401 West Pine Street, and if approving the issuance of such revenue bonds, adopt resolution number 608116, or provide alternate direction, which may include a motion to require the public hearing cost recovery of $3,450 as a condition of the approval, and to direct the mayor and clerk not to sign the resolution until payment is made. Federal tax law limits the types of projects that may be funded with tax-exempt bond proceeds. The TEFRA public hearing is to identify the project which may receive such financing and to provide interested parties the opportunity to speak on any matters related to such potential bond issues, including the nature and location of the project. The proposed project is an existing market rate 204-unit apartment complex known as Woodstone Apartments. It was originally, originally built in 1985 and includes many amenities, including a pool, hot tub, fitness room, covered parking, and laundry facilities on the site currently. Vintage Housing Development is currently under contract to acquire Woodstone and intends to rehabilitate the project using 4% low-income housing tax credits and tax-exempt revenue The authority is a joint exercise of power authority comprised of over 500 California cities, counties, and special districts, including the city of Lompoc. The authority is authorized to assist in the financing of facilities for multifamily housing projects. The revenue bonds, or a portion thereof, will be private activity bonds for the purpose of the IRS code. Pursuant to such code, prior to issuance, the governmental unit having jurisdiction over the entire area in which the facility financed by such bonds is to be located must hold a public hearing after a public notice. According to Vintage, many of the existing apartment residents are below the low-income threshold, approximately 80% of those currently residing. The remaining 20% would have to potentially relocate due to incomes exceeding the allowable levels once the project is converted. Staff is concerned about the impact to those approximately 40 households who would be displaced, and due to our current vacancy rate being less than 1%, and that 25% of our multifamily rental housing stock is low-income, we're a little concerned on where those households would go. The city bears no financial liability with respect to the issuance of the revenue bonds. Further, the city is not a party to any of the financing documents related to the issuance of those bonds. The property will receive a property tax exemption that helps allow for the rent levels to be lower. The impact of such exemption to the city, per the 2016 property tax statement, is estimated to be $35,000 annually in property tax revenue that would have otherwise been received by the city. In addition, there are other taxing entities that would be impacted, including the school district, the county, and others, and the total impact would be approximately $219,000. Because the project is proposed to provide 100% low-income affordable housing, since 2015, all cities are prohibited by the California Revenue and Taxation Code from requiring a developer of such housing to pay a payment in lieu of taxes. Therefore, the city could not mitigate loss of property taxes with a fee. If the city chooses to approve the resolution, the city could require, as a condition of approval, reimbursement of the cost associated solely with the public hearing, which is estimated at $3,450 again. In conclusion, holding the public hearing and adoption of the resolution, approving the issuance of the bond financing, will result in conversion of 204 market rate apartment units to long-term affordable units. The project sponsor is here to answer any questions you have about specifics of the project or long-term use and things like that, and I'm here if you have any questions.
Okay, first, any questions for Ms. Alakarn? Okay, with the applicant? Okay, with the applicant?
We also have to receive public testimony, but I'm not really sure what order that needs to happen.
I think we can hear from the applicant first.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, council, thank you for your time. I think Kristi did an excellent job kind of outlining exactly what we do, but I did want to specify that we're actually going to be investing about eight and a half million dollars into the project, and our intention is to re-side and to re-roof and create an amenity package that is equal or better than to what's existing there today. We're hoping to create a better sense of place and community for the existing tenants. Our goal is to keep everyone in the project that can be there, and with the idea of creating a better community. We hope, and we're at least thinking that this is a better, you know, a better opportunity for the workforce housing population because we're targeting people who are making over thirty-four thousand dollars and giving them a better place to live at a rent-restricted rate, which should save them anywhere from two-hundred-and-fifty to three-hundred dollars per month, which I think averages out over a year for all the tenants to about six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars of income that they can then turn around and use for disposable income within the community, which hopefully offsets some of the property taxes that were talked about in terms of reduction with by putting sales tax back into the property, or sales tax back into the community and directly investing. And also, the eight and a half million dollars obviously does have a tax component to that of about seven-hundred thousand, so hopefully that again will help offset some of the negative that was brought forth by the staff report. Overall, you know, we're excited. We're long-term owners. Vintage Housing has been in this marketplace. We're in Santa Clarita, we're in Napa, we're in Santa Rosa, and we've been a long-term partner with those communities, and we have about eight thousand units up and down the west coast. We've owned our properties for as long, you know, we control, we own and buy and purchase and control those properties, and we've, you know, we continue to reinvest in those properties through the life of the ownership. Just outside the meeting, Kristi expressed some concerns that, you know, about other properties in the affordable housing side, that people aren't continuing their reinvestment, aren't continuing to manage their properties. That's not what we do. Again, we're a long-term owner, we work with the communities, we work with fire and life safety, we provide, we work with the, to secure, to create a secure environment within the community. I think, you know, I don't want to continue to take up your time, but I just wanted to kind of outlay what our idea and our strategy is for the property and open it up for any questions, and obviously give a chance for the community to come out and talk in support of, because we've had a chance to meet with some of the tenants, and they've been very happy with what we're proposing in terms of reinvesting in the asset, so.
Okay. Any questions? Councilor Mosby.
It mentions in the resolution you have thirty million dollar, up to thirty million dollars, and it says here for acquisition and rehab. Are you able to share how much the acquisition?
The property is being purchased for about twenty-nine million dollars, and none of that is to us, this is to a third party.
And they're using these special bond funds to do that?
Well, we're using the special, we're using the bond funds in order to facilitate the purchase of the property and the renovation of the property.
So you're saying twenty-nine million, then there's a difference, then you chuck an eight and a half million on top of that from some other funding mechanism?
Correct. The tax credit funding mechanism, and also money from our own company.
Okay.
So we have a personal investment in the property.
Councilor Vega.
Well, sir, aside from the less than one percent vacancy rate we have here in Lompoc, there are, obviously you have people that are proponents of it, but are these people also aware that, that maybe they won't qualify to live in the unit, or maybe they will? Okay, and how, if they're displaced, you guys obviously won't have a hand in relocating these people.
Absolutely. We provided for, in our budget, we provided for relocation packages for people who may not qualify. I mean, obviously, as we get in, we'll try to work and manage that process as much as we can, but if someone has to be relocated, we've set aside money for that.
Well, the reality of living in the town of Lompoc is people are reluctant now with the voucher system, you know, section eight. Many of the property management companies, they're not accepting some of these vouchers. I'm sure they're as good as anybody else, but I'm saying there's people here that are making the choice here that do property management on a professional level, and we're already having a hard time placing these people.
The section eight people?
The section eight people, you know, and I hate to see them short-changed and make it even more strained because of the less than one percent vacancy rate.
We have no issue with the, I don't mean to cut you off, but you don't have to be concerned with section eight because under the program, we're required to accept if they have a voucher. It's really people who don't qualify in terms of upper, past that income, that they could potentially go to the housing stock or be a home purchaser if they exceeded the income. Those would be the people we'd be to, to be concerned with displacing, I guess, if you will.
Yeah. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, thank you. We may call you back later.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll open this up for a public comment. Anyone from the public wish to say anything on this item? Step forward to the microphone, state your name.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is George Garcia, I'm with FPI Property Management. I'd like to introduce Bill. Bill is one of the original residents of Woodstone Apartments. He is a member of this community since the early seventies, and I'd like to maybe perhaps have him explain how this, this development could possibly impact his family and his life.
How it will affect me?
Yes.
This program that you're speaking of would certainly help me. I live on a small income, and I pay utilities, I pay roughly eleven hundred, eleven hundred, and then I have to pay utilities. I get by, of course, but this, this looks like a godsend. And I've been here since sixty, early sixties with the military, went away, come back, retired in seventy-four, so I could need a program like this. It would help me. I get by, of course, but with utilities and everything's going up.
Thank you, Bill. Yeah, belated, happy Veterans Day too, by the way.
Thank you.
Twenty-four years.
Yeah.
Definitely appreciate the service.
Thank you.
And we do have other residents of Woodstone that have made the time to come out here. If it's okay, is that the time we have, or?
That's for, just for Bill.
Okay, perfect. I have another bill. I've got two bills.
Okay.
Bill, if you don't mind coming up.
Okay, those of you who'd like to speak, if you just kind of step forward so you don't have a lot of time.
Great. So if I could quickly introduce Bill. Bill, another veteran of the Air Force, longtime resident of Lompoc as well. So, Bill, perhaps you can speak to the city council and mayor about how this would impact your life.
I've been a resident for fifty-five years in Lompoc. I was divorced in thirty-five, and I was looking for a place to live, and I took my two girls, and we went looking, and we found a place called Raven's Wood, and we took an apartment, and the rent was four-hundred-and-thirty dollars a month. I've been there thirty-one years, same apartment, and I pay little over eleven hundred dollars. I have to pay for the water and all utilities, and I'm on social security, and I just get by, and hopefully, this is going to help us, especially the long-termers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please come on up and introduce yourself.
Hi, my name is Kito Plante. I'm a Lompoc native. I was born in Santa Barbara, raised in Lompoc since eighty-eight. I've, for a long time now, I've been looking for a place that's good for me and my family. Me and my girlfriend recently moved into Woodstone Apartments, and we're paying about eleven hundred a month, and it's, me working a normal nine-to-five job, making a little over minimum wage, I think this would be a good asset to us for the, and for the community of Woodstone, because it's hard to find a nice place to live that's gated with a, with a pool, with everything that they have in there, the weights, the gym and everything, and I think that it would be a really good asset to everyone in the community of Woodstone, and it would help us out very, a lot.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And this is Molly. Molly is almost a five-year resident of the Woodstone, is that correct?
Woodstone, yeah. My name is Molly, and I moved to Santa Barbara County in nineteen eighty, and my husband and I, in our excursions, came to Lompoc, and I fell in love with Lompoc. It was a quiet little community, and the people were friendly, not like Santa Barbara. Santa Barbara, everybody's strangers. We then moved to Vanderburg Village in nineteen ninety-nine. It wasn't, we lived there for sixteen years, then my husband passed away, and we had a big three-bedroom, two-car garage house, and it was just too big for me, so I looked and looked for a place to move to. I called the police department, and they recommended Woodstone. They said Woodstone would be just right for a widowed lady living on her own. But now, I moved in, the rent was great and all that, but the rent has been raised so high now, I also am paying over eleven hundred dollars. I also live on social security, and if this project doesn't go through, I'm going to be forced to move to Sacramento to live with my son because my savings and my check just don't stretch out too much further than the eleven hundred dollars. When I moved there, I asked the people that had it then that I wanted a forever home until the good Lord called me home, and I was hoping that Woodstone would be that for me. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. If I may introduce Nancy.
Hi, I'm Nancy, and I've lived in the Santa Barbara County since nineteen eighty-four, and I moved to Lompoc five years ago. I am retired in a semi-way, but I don't earn enough to push myself beyond the eleven hundred and some odd dollars I have to pay every month. If my rent is raised, I will be forced to move. The problem I have is I wouldn't know where, so I'm hoping that this project goes through. There are a lot of me out there who really have a nice place to live, want to continue living there, are supportive of our community, and I'm hoping that the project is approved.
Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you.
And Mayor and City Council, if it's okay, I actually had a great opportunity last week to meet with a lot of other residents that are current residents of Woodstone that unfortunately couldn't be here today, and the reason is because they're at work. So this community would not only benefit the senior population that, as we saw, but also there's a huge workforce population that I think will be greatly, you know, positively impacted by this. Matter of fact, I don't know if it's okay with you, Willis, for me to even introduce you, but Willis, he is sitting here on the right-hand side. He happens to be employed by the local newspaper, and he is also a proud resident of Woodstone. So like Willis, I got to meet with a lot of families that would meet that threshold, that are working, working hard on full-time jobs but are just not able to get ahead. So if there is opportunity at a different time, I guarantee you that there's plenty of other people that will be willing to come and speak. Thank you very much.
Let me ask you a question, maybe, so the speakers today, they were, they're concerned about their rents being raised, and they're looking forward to their rents being lowered. What is your plan? What, how much will you lower their rents?
Well, because we're at an income limit, and we're also being, providing for their utilities, they won't have to pay water and sewer any longer, it's going to be somewhere three-hundred, maybe more dollar reduction in their rent, so an eleven hundred dollar rent is going to go down to eight hundred dollars.
Okay. Councilor Mosby.
And that's what they would pay, but what would you receive?
That's what I receive, but I mean, this is not-
Because through a subsidized voucher or something like that, what would you receive?
The subsidy comes from the sale of the tax credits, but you were asking the funding source, that's how we're able to do that. So we sell our tax credits to a major corporation, Aegon, they pay us money so we can build and renovate the project, and that's how the deal is structured. We don't have a voucher system.
So your rents would be capped at the eight hundred or nine hundred?
Correct. Our rents are capped by the program.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Anyone else from the public? Seeing no one, we're going to close public comment, bring it back to the council. Ms. Alarcon, or, thank you, Ms. Alarcon, or possibly Ms. Breeze? We're required to have a certain level of low-income housing. Where do we sit right now?
I can speak in what, where we're at as far as multifamily. Our multifamily housing stock currently consists of approximately forty-six hundred units. Of those forty-six hundred units, eleven hundred of them are income-restricted, and that range is anywhere from that eighty percent to thirty percent of the area median income. So we're at about twenty-five percent of our, our entire multifamily housing stock is low-income or restricted.
Okay. And that meets our requirement? Does it more than meet our requirement? Are we?
The RIN numbers that you're referring to, I believe, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Are the numbers that are during the housing cycle. The state requires us to have X amount of land that is actually zoned for housing at the various rates, and we do have those housing numbers. We have the land that is zoned for it, and we do monitor any of the units that are constructed. It's new construction that we are accountable for, but as long as we have the property zoned, we're in good shape.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Mosby.
Ms. Alarcon, can you, how do we sit with the rest of the communities? Let's say, you know, Beelton, Carp, Galita, Santa Barbara, Santa Maria, solving, how are we looking, I mean, what kind of percentage do they have of low-income in their multifamily units?
Per each jurisdiction's twenty-fifteen-twenty-three housing element, and then their properties that are listed on the state tax credit inventory of affordable housing projects, we are five times more than them when we look at the percentage, the lowest being Beelton at about two percent, and the highest being Santa Maria and Galita at six percent.
So we're pretty much, we're, like you say, four or five times as much of the low-income housing. It's, I mean, everybody's sympathetic with that, but what do we do with the people who don't qualify for that? What do we, where do we send them?
They would be battling for one of those, of the seventy-five percent of those other units to get a market-rate unit if they're not one who would qualify for low income. The Vintage talked about relocation. One of the things that does happen, and they may speak more to this, but typically when a project is converted and relocation is paid, there are two options in most cases, and one is they pay them to move into another unit. It doesn't mean that that unit would be in the City of Lompoc. The other thing is that they can, and I don't know if their program will do this, but in some cases, they will give them enough that it's like a down payment for a home to purchase. So I don't know if that's something that, I know it's a budgeted line item, but I don't know if that, that's how their relocation benefits will work, but that's just to throw that out there.
Another question on, over the next thirty years, using today's numbers, the city's general fund would lose about a million dollars in, in property tax. There's no way to recover that, then?
Due to that legislation that occurred in twenty fifteen, in the past, the city has asked, when something like this happens, we, or is requested, in order to offset that, we ask for a fee in lieu of the taxes and negotiate some sort of amount. We're not able to do that due to that legislation now, so if it is lost, it's, it's lost.
And of that other twenty-five percent, approximately, are we getting in lieu fees from them, or are those losses in property tax as well?
We have, some of the units with the dissolution, I guess we'll call it, of LHCDC, when their properties went back on the open market, many of their units continue to maintain the affordability levels, but the private owners or the private- But the private owners, or the private market purchasers who came in and bought those units, they don't benefit from the lot, them being off the property tax rolls. So we, those went back on the property tax rolls. But two of the largest projects in Lompoc, both are not on the property tax rolls. And anything by the housing authority also.
So we're probably somewhere, and just doing the math broadly, probably, again, in the next 40, 30 years, we're looking at about a $4 to $5 million reduction in general fund spread amongst that whole portfolio.
I have pregnancy brain, so I can't do the math that quick, Councilmember Mosby, I'm sorry.
The other, the other number that's out there, because we just had a big school bond pass, because we know that schools are having difficulties getting items done, but is there any way for any of the other entities to recover, again extrapolating that $219,000 in property taxes that would go away? And over 30, next 30 years, about $6.5 million of reduction in property taxes, is there any way for recovery?
I don't think through any action we would take tonight. That would probably be something our city attorney might want to give us some insight on as far as the legal ability to do that.
And I know that's, we have a small percentage of the total, but it just seems like we've done so much already, and as we know, where our general fund is, and budget time's coming around the corner, we've, we've had a, we're in deficit spending right now with our, our general fund to a small degree, things are truing up. But it seems like we've done a significant number of this already with, with 25% of the multifamily housing stock, and you say, community of Beelton, what's, what's Santa Barbara? What's their percentage? What are they doing?
Five.
So 5%. So we're doing five times what Santa Barbara's, so we've kind of really put our, our wallet out there in a long way already. And it's important for us to protect the general fund and the money that comes into the general fund. And we know we have a long list of items that, that we haven't been able to achieve. And it wasn't long ago, I know city employees were on long lengths of furloughs, and it's, you know, we need to be mindful when we're making these movements, what we're doing. And we just had a project just right before this one, where we were assessing the gentleman and other tax on a project, because we need to recover. And now we're doing the opposite on something, or potentially, and got to let go, but we just, it seems like we did this, and now we're going to do that. It doesn't, it seems like we've done a lot already around the town everywhere.
Councilor Vega.
For Christie over here, it sounds like we've already met our quota as far as for affordable housing here. It's quite clear. And how does the city recover any of this money? Again, just as Councilman Mosby has asked, you know, we recently, this is a lot of money. We've been talking about public safety for quite a while as one of the support groups and trying to build up our public safety system and make Lompoc safer. And I think the whole idea behind that was to be sustainable. This whole town has been geared up to be sustainable. And I think, you know, when we looked at a piece of land, and I'll bring up the fire station, back then, when we were going to purchase, looking at the options of purchasing another piece of land, one of the negatives was that we would take property off the tax rolls for money that we would already be needing for our general fund. So again, I think that probably for us to be sustainable and attract the type of businesses that we're looking to attract as far as economic development, I think it would be a negative. I also think that as we look at our budget and our general fund, and our needs and wants, we can't keep asking for more and getting less. So I think that aside from the relocation package that they would offer any of the tenants, you could relocate them, but they're not going to be relocated in this city. It doesn't seem like with the rental rates the way they are. So, thank you. That's what I wanted to ask. Am I correct in all my analogies there?
I couldn't say 100% certain, but I think it would be challenging. I, I think of our TBRA program, and again, we had over 250 households that were qualified for a security deposit, and of those 250, we were able to house over 130-something, but 100 of them, we couldn't house them because they couldn't find a unit. And many times, they were going to Vandenberg Village and asking us, will you assist us with that? And we couldn't, because our program was specific to the city of Lompoc. So when it comes to rental housing, we've, we've really seen the challenges of not only finding a unit that is available, but that is, that meets health and safety requirements of our programs. So it's nice to hear that these households that are currently there have really, they really enjoy where they're at, but obviously, it's, it's an ongoing challenge in Lompoc is finding housing, not just affordable housing, but market-rate housing as well.
You know, it's, it's, and I applaud these people, that the fixed income, the veterans, the older people, I really do feel for everyone here. So it's not anything against people looking for, for the rent to be more affordable. But we just approved an item tonight for another builder that was, that they were going to do a fee structure with sort of a mellow roost-type tax, which one of the council members asked that the city attorney go back and rename it to be some sort of a fee instead of a tax. Again, this was an added fee that was added to a developer for their build-out, which is going to also add to the general fund for our public safety needs and other infrastructures in the future for which we need. So, thank you for your answers. Thank you.
Okay, it's a little unusual, but if the applicant wants to come up and have any final comments based on our discussion?
I guess I've been listening to you guys and trying to understand, because you've been trying to phrase it in terms of total housing stock relative to the percentage of housing stock that you have, but I mean, what, if you look at your demographic information, providing workforce housing, which is what we're targeting, is really meeting about 80% of your demographic, maybe more, of the people who are actually your constituents and the people working here. So shouldn't you be more concerned, less about the percentage of stock to the total, but more about how many people are here that you're actually providing housing that's livable? I mean, you have a deteriorating housing stock, and the problem is that your overall housing stock isn't being maintained right with the level of reinvestment or being built to the level that needs to be for the people who are here, right? So you have continually rising rents, but who's going to come in and buy this property and invest $8.5 million? It doesn't make economic sense from, if you're a market-rate developer. So you're going to have a deteriorating asset, they're going to try to, the next buyer, which there's buyers lined up behind us, are going to come here, they're going to purchase the asset, they're not going to do anything to it, and they're going to just continue to try to raise the rents until there's a breaking point, right? And they're not going to invest in the asset the way that we're willing to do. So who loses overall? I mean, when I make this pitch, who really loses from an economic standpoint? You don't get the sales taxes that we're talking about, which as a city, you're going to gain more in sales tax by, by having more money in the pockets of your constituents than you are going to be on the property tax side. You're going to have a significantly redeveloped asset right in your main corridor, where suddenly people are going to go, wait a minute, people are willing to reinvest here, how can we do that? How can we match that? How can we continue to reinvest here? I, I mean, I, I really strongly feel that we're, you guys are proposing this the wrong way, and no offense to anyone, but when you look at this overall, you're meeting the needs of the people who are living here, you're providing housing that's better for them. I mean, I don't know how I can make this pitch any stronger. I certainly appreciate where you guys are coming from, you feel as a percentage of the county, at least this is what I'm hearing, and if, correct me if I'm wrong, that you guys are doing more than other people. But what I think you are is providing what is necessary for all of California, for this county, for the people who are here in your city. I mean, you're hearing from them. I haven't heard a word of really opposition. I haven't heard anybody say, hey, we don't want this. I mean, so from that position, I think you really need to kind of generally look. I certainly understand the budgetary impact. I still think there's better economic benefit that's not being included in here. And I still think that there's providing housing for people who need it, and you're providing for your constituents. I mean, I'm happy to ask, you know, we can have more discussion, or maybe what I've said doesn't make sense, but.
What's your current vacancy rate at that property?
About 1%.
So the demand, it's-
I'm sorry, George, I don't know, maybe you can adjust, where are you at? Oh.
It's about 5%.
Sorry, it's about 5%.
There's a, already, there's a supply. Remember, there are other people who need, you would be displacing other people.
We are potentially-
But I mean, and in the future, you'd be continually displacing the people who don't qualify in the low-income category.
You're absolutely right, there will be a section of your-
So there's, there's a displacement of that, and one of the hopes is they have it. We do have a large stock at 25%.
You do.
So we do have a large stock out there.
Well, I mean, a total number to the total people, I don't think that's a large stock. It's a percentage of your stock, but I think that there's a need for more housing.
The other question is, how would you propose that we pay for public safety? Do, we still need to provide public safety to the facility, but how would we, we provide the funds to general fund? Where do you propose that money would go, come from?
Well, that's, again, I'm, I'm speaking from the sales tax side. If you're lowering rents and there's more consumer-
There's no, there's no, there's no proof of that number. It, it sounds good, but there's no proof of that number.
I can only look at what, you know, I'm seeing in terms of the way the cities are funded, which I went and looked last night, because I knew that this was an issue, and one that I would be worried about if I was on your side. And it certainly looks to me, as of the laws for 2016, you're going to have an increase in sales tax revenue, and property taxes are going to decrease as a percentage of general revenue. So I, that's why I was interested in this.
Yeah, but it's, we've done a lot of this, and it's one of the reasons why we're in the position we are, is we have a lot of this out there, we have a lot of the housing that's out there. Nobody's trying to be mean to anybody, but you ought to remember, there's other people out there who need the next level of housing. We have a huge shortage of that as well, and you'd be pulling more off the market for, for the people who were at the next level.
I don't see that. Maybe we're stimulating the creation of that secondary housing or homeownership. I mean, you have homeownership programs in place. I mean, aren't we stimulating those people if we're providing them displacement money to give them basically a down payment? I mean, we're talking about giving them $8,000 to $10,000. I mean, that's a significant amount of money for them to go.
To go somewhere else.
To go, yeah, to go, to purchase a house or to go move up to another level.
To, probably in this town, you heard the numbers there, they would end up going somewhere else.
Well, but the numbers are predicated on what I'm saying. You guys have, you, you know, the city needs more housing. I mean, you should be looking to, how do, can we create more housing? I mean, and I'm, and I'd be happy to discuss that with you. I'd actually welcome it. I think you have a great city that we'd love to invest in. So.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else on council? Okay, and just for full disclosure, I did earlier, I think this week or later last week, I did have a phone discussion with the applicant, so just so everyone knows. Okay, I will entertain a motion. I'll make a motion. My motion will be that we do not adopt resolution number 6081, parentheses, 16. I'm looking for a second.
I'll say it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded and discussed. As the city attorney, does that satisfy that motion? Okay, let's vote. Okay, and that passes 401. Sorry, gentlemen. Okay. Okay, written communications.
Nothing.
Okay. Oral communications, this is your last opportunity to speak to us for up to two minutes on any Seeing no one rise, we're going to close oral communication. Bring back the council for council requests, comments, and meeting reports. We'll start with Councilor Mosby.
I know I had something, but I'll, I'll pass.
Councilmember Vega.
I do have a council request, and I'd like to actually address Mr. Buck's comments as far as, for the city engineer, public's work department. I was wondering if there was a possibility we could bring this up for discussion and get some clarification. Unless there's some movement here that I haven't heard about, I think he's been pretty cordial, and I've been listening silently here. It'd be nice for us to get a little clarification in a future meeting. I was hoping you guys would support that. I think that he deserves at least that and possible action if we can do this. Okay?
Mr. Luther.
Mike Luther, Assistant Public Works Director, City Engineer. This is an agendized item for December 6th meeting.
Okay. Hey, that solves that, but hey, I just wanted to make sure I was doing my part.
Just to clarify, the issue we're bringing December 6th, his original request had to do with the placement of a specific stop sign at a specific intersection, that's what we're bringing forward. His comments this evening expanded that a bit as he started talking about code changes, but to let you know, what we are bringing forward was his, at least his initial issue.
Again, with my request, if I could add to it, if it's not there, is it, is there going to be any action taken, or is this just a presentation?
No, we're planning on teeing it up for your action.
Okay.
I think what we're going to, in short, I anticipate that we're going to present an overview of the current situation, what it's like. The, the intersection where he's requesting that stop signs be placed doesn't currently meet warrants, so it wouldn't be our recommendation to you to place stop signs there. However, you certainly have the ability to direct us to do so.
Okay, well, thank you. I have one more kind of question, kind of comment. Whenever the city has presentations available from which, we usually sit here and just listen, they're just presentations, but I'd like to expand and see if I'm within the realm, Jeff, city attorney, of us always adding to a presentation possible action by the city council if necessary, if deemed necessary. It seems like we sit through a lot of presentations, and that's exactly what they were, but when we agendize these, are we agendized to even have more common or have some sort of influence on whatever we're doing?
I think as they're agendized now, they're just called presentations.
Right, right.
And so there can be a presentation, there can be a discussion, or questions could be asked. But if you wanted to be able to take an action, then something would need to be added to the agenda that says-
Is that, I guess what I'm asking, is that out of order or out of line? You have experience doing these things, and you know, it'd be nice for us to always have the power to interject on, on a certain issue, if possible.
You can always ask questions about the presentation, but if it's, if there's a specific action that you're going to vote to take, then that would need to be on the agenda.
It'd be separately agendized, okay.
Or the same agenda, I mean, it just had to be listed on the agenda.
So basically, all we have to do is presentation with possible council action or something? Is that what you're saying?
And what that action might be.
Okay.
You know, if it's a presentation about stop signs in the city, if that's what the agenda says, then it can just be a presentation, and then you can ask questions to staff. But if you wanted to take an action, it would be, the agenda listing would have to say, "presentation about stop signs in the city," and consideration of whether to add stop sign at certain intersections.
Okay, well, maybe, let me re-ask this question. It's pretty hard to probably take an action on something that was just presented, but how about council to provide alternate direction also? Do we always have that ability and power within a presentation? Would that be another way of putting that on the agenda?
You, you would have the power to ask for an action to come back at a further agenda.
But that would be another, yeah, another, another cycle. I guess I'm trying to shortcut the cycle, okay?
Unfortunately, the Brown Act is a little bit burdensome, and so if you, you have a presentation, it's just a presentation. If you want to take an action, you ask for some-
I had to ask, okay, see what we can do. Thank you so much.
Councilor Hamedal.
Oh, yeah, well, very interesting evening. Also on the veterans, that was an excellent place. If you want to go see them, should go down and take a look at what they did to clean up. It was a real mess, and Mosby and others, they went down and cleaned it up, so go down and take a look at it. We had two different functions out one day. On that day, we had a vets building, Veterans Memorial Building, and also out there. So that's the only places I've been the last two times, so I just thought if you, if you are driving around and you want to see it, that is a beautiful structure that they put in down there.
Okay, on Veterans Day, I did attend both of the veterans' ceremonies, the one at Veterans Memorial Building and the one at River Park with the Vietnam Memorial. I did attend both those and spoke at both those. And I do have a staff request. With the new president-elect coming into the United States, I believe, well, he's indicated that he will try to generate infrastructure. And I believe that we need to prepare ourselves to have some shovel-ready projects available if there is money that's going to become available. Now, so I'd like to make a staff request, that staff come back to us, provide us with an estimate on what it would cost to get some engineering documents in place, we can put them on a shelf in case that's ready. And the, and the places that I have on my list here right now would be, well, actually, the fire station is a shovel-ready project right now, so we do have that on the shelf. But we do need to get something possibly for the fire station for, to- But we do need to get something possibly for the fire station, for, to do something, finally bring down the old municipal pool, and Ryan Park. Those are the four immediate things that I'd like to see the city come back to us with, with an estimate on what it would, city manager.
I'm sorry, I only heard three from you. I heard fire station, pool demo, and Ryan Park.
Fire station, police station.
Police station. Thank you.
The old pool, Ryan Park. And I believe we may have another one close to it. Council meeting coming up, we have a staff presentation on a multipurpose sports field, I believe. That could become a shovel-ready project as well. But I think we need to be prepared, because last time this happened, Santa Maria got a new fire station because they had a shovel-ready project, so. So that'd be my request, and I need two council members to second and third that. Use microphone.
I'll second.
The difficulty I'm having is that we haven't even looked at size, dimensions, valuation on this. It's just such a huge thing you're throwing out there. There's a lot of other things that come with shovel-ready projects. There's maintenance, there's staffing, there's everything else that comes with it, so-
That's what I'm asking for, is that the staff comes back to us with, with just an estimate of what, what it would be to prepare this? Because you're right. I mean, we don't have that.
I mean, I can see your Ryan Park aspects. I understand some communication's already been established, but we don't, you know, I can see the swimming pool tear down. We still have, I don't know if the tanks have been torn down the rest of the way at wastewater. And I can see, without going into discussion, I just, I just think it's a, it's just a very broad, a little too broad for me to nibble on.
Okay. I'll have one second. I need a third. Use microphone.
I'll give you a third, at least to bring back the proposal. I would like to make a comment, though, that I think that it would be a waste of time without size and scope of some of these projects. Okay? So basically, we might want to come back with a discussion and say, hey, about possibly a size and scope, instead of bringing back the same proposals that were, that died before.
Yeah. Hopefully, that'll be part of the staff presentation.
Mayor Lingel.
Yes.
There is another project that's very close to being shovel-ready, which is our transit maintenance facility. So that would be something else.
That's true. Okay. So that's already shovel-ready, so. Okay. Let's see. So if there's nothing else, this meeting is adjourned to our regular city council meeting of December 6th at 6:30 PM. Thank you and good night.